We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. Say before we get started here, we've got a city employee that had a death in the family, Dave Spiegel. His sister has Down syndrome, had Down syndrome. I believe now, I'm not sure of her age, she's in her 50s, I believe, early 50s maybe, mid 50s. And that in itself is rare to have a Down syndrome live that long. But when you have a special needs person in your family, boy, it really touches your heart because your life revolves out of necessity around that person. And there's a fantastic tie there that makes the passing of someone just that much more traumatic. So I'd like all of us to keep Dave in our prayers. He's going through a very tough time on loss like this, and it's understandable why he would be. So basically, as a favor to him, I would like to have a moment of silence for his sister, Debbie Spiegel. Please. Thank you. For tonight's invocation, we've got Reverend Bill Kearns from the Davis Memorial Christian Church. Reverend?
With all power heads. Loving God is indeed a humbling experience to be served with the public. We all serve, I think all of us in this room serve the public in different ways. Sometimes we wonder why we're doing it, but other times we are reminded that we're doing it in our own way, that we're trying to build your kingdom here in Taylorville. And so I just ask dear God, your continued blessings upon each one of these city aldermen. I know that they've made a lot of sacrifice of time and money and sometimes aggravation. I pray, dear God, that they'll just keep before them the vision that you have for this community, that they will be enthused by that vision that you're giving this community as to ways that we can make life better for all citizens here in Taylorville. This we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Ready to watch your names.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Ray Coons.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Aye.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Seven aldermen present, one absent. First item on the agenda, we have a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title of Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dorchiness, second by Alderman Coontz, I believe. Discussion or comment?
Your honor, I'd like to have the minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee, or not that one, the minutes of the special city council meeting held August 30th, 2012 polled, please.
Okay. Request to have that polled. So we've got just the minutes of the public hearing, August 20th, the minutes of the regular meeting held August 20th, 2012, and the minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting held August 23rd, 2012. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now for the actual vote itself, again, it was for the minutes of the public hearing of August 20th, the regular meeting of August 20th, and the Street and Sewer Committee meeting held August 23rd, 2012. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
Alderman Lawrence, second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ready to watch your names.
Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to the Plan Commission. I'd ask Mr. Hauser to summarize what most of us witnessed.
Thank you, Reverend. This evening, there were two items before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first one was a special use request, which was made by Congressional Video Systems Incorporated, Jim Hamley, President, and Stephanie Hamley, Secretary, to construct two fourplexes at a property addressed as 425 South Cheyenne Street. There were quite a few people who came to the meeting, neighbors, and unrepresented of the builder development, and a lot of commentary was heard. And having discussed that and circled it all in, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to not recommend approval of that to a city council.
Okay. With that being said, I would entertain a motion here to follow the Plan Commission's recommendation not to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Burdell. Additional discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, Mr. Hauser.
There was the second item that came before our committee was the site plan for the proposed fourplex at 425 South Cheyenne Street. And once again, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to not recommend approval of that to the city council.
Okay. With that said, entertain a motion to, I guess we reject the site plan? Pardon, Dave?
Really, it's just accepting the recommendation.
Accepting the recommendation.
Not a recommendation.
Okay.
There you go.
Alderman Burdell, you made that?
The vote was, I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Walters. Additional discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There were no other items presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we rejected.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hauser, and thank everyone for the work they did tonight. This is how it's supposed to work sometimes, so, thank you. Okay, the next item I think we have here on the agenda is a resolution for the Public Utility Easement Agreement with Philip H. and Henrietta Tullis. Entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Don't move.
Alderman Lawrence, do the second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next resolution, a public utility agreement with the City of Tana, Illinois. Entertain a motion to approve that resolution. Again, this is for the water line going to the, I think it's the Mayhand property out there on 29.
Yes, it is.
Where it's going to bore under the road and under the bike trail.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Lawrence, second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending Paragraph 2 of Title 11, Chapter 9, Section 1 of the City of Taylorville Code, addressing site development plans. Entertain a motion to approve that?
Don't move.
Alderman Voda.
Second.
Second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance rescinding the City of Taylorville ordinances, number 1857, 1858, and 2428, addressing signage governing traffic on Hayner Street, Taft Street, and Maxwell Street, and amending city ordinance number 1931 as found at 6-4-3-1 to correctly state the true name of Hayner Avenue.
Don't move.
I'll second that.
Alderman Heatherling, second by Alderman Walters. Did you say you have a comment?
Yes. Just cleaning up some various ordinances that we already had in place out there for yield signs and so forth, and make it all correct for.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Your honor, these were, that motion and the following motion regarding the trapping were overlooked at the last Lake and Airport Committee meeting, that's why they make their appearance on this evening.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to allow trapping at Lake Taylorville for the 2012-2013 season with the same rules as last year.
Yeah, I'll make that motion also, your honor.
Okay, second on that.
Sure.
Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to allow the Knights of Columbus to hold their annual Tootsie Roll Drive on September 21st and 22nd at the corner of West Main Cross and Webster Streets.
Your honor, these, we try our best to have the various clubs and organizations get these things to us in a timely manner, but sometimes they slip on upon them. And so we couldn't address these with any type of motion at the street committee meeting, so I asked to have them put on the council agendas so that we could go ahead and let these organizations go through with that. So I will make that motion.
Okay. Second by Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to allow the Taylorville High School Homecoming Parade to be held at 5:30 PM on Thursday, September 27th, 2012, using the same route as last year.
Again, your honor, I'll make that motion with the same comment for the previous meeting.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to direct the Street and Sewer Department to remove the spruce tree from the Boulevard at 2305 Lakeshore Drive.
Your honor, I think we should probably wait until we do the next one for the approval of the minutes of the Tree Board meeting, and then I can get into that motion there because it's part of the Tree Board minutes.
Okay.
If that's the proper way, of course, people should.
I don't think, it really doesn't matter because the minutes you're just approving are, something's already down recorded.
I'll go ahead and make the motion then.
Okay. Second by Alderman Burdell. Additional discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Tree Board meeting of August 21st, 2012.
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comments?
One thing to bring to everyone's attention, in the second paragraph of the Tree Board minutes, they're still waiting for the final results on the lab test for the ginkgo trees around the square. One thing that was noted was one chemical in particular has already been found, so we're waiting for additional information to find out whether chemicals, if any, were found in the soil around the square of the ginkgo trees.
I do know they did get that report today, but there's supposed to be kind of a synopsis or something to explain it. We got the actual results of the things found with long scientific names, so we need someone to, we need that piece of paper that tells us what all that means. So hopefully, they were supposed to get that maybe this afternoon, I don't know. The chief's taken his hat, so they have not received it yet, so.
Will you put a memo out there on that, your honor?
I will.
Your honor, one question.
Alderman Voda.
Can probably answer this. I caught we're going to replace the trees at Route 29 in McAdam Drive. Is that correct?
Well, there's been a request that we replace them, but since the, since that's a severe drought this summer, I think she's wanting to wait till we get a little bit further into fall, take them all out at the same time and replace the ones that didn't make it.
I guess the question I have is financing of the trees, is that going to be donated again? Are we looking at?
Well, she's pretty good at getting the donations, so I guess we'll replace as much money we'll allow, depending on how many trees didn't make it. I don't know if we got a firm count on it yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to direct the city engineer to apply for an Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant Program for Stormwater Management.
Your honor, I'll make that motion with a comment.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heatherling, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, your honor. Gentlemen, you have this in your packet, this is something that's come up rather fast for us for information purposes. It appears that we would have a real good chance of getting some additional funding to help complete some more of the stormwater projects in the City Park area, to finish that up, and maybe some other places in town. There's a deadline on applying for that. It looks like ours would be under number two, which would be stormwater retention and infiltration category. Maximum amount would be 750,000 or 75% of the eligible project cost. We'll get additional information as we go along with this, but I think it's something that we should at least apply for and see if we can, if we can get some additional dollars to help us. Because I've used all you gentlemen's $10 million pretty well, so I'm looking for some additional dollars to complete some more of our stormwater projects.
That does beg the question, I did have a question on how much we would have to pay, and I believe it's a minimum of 25. The city engineer suggests we might want to up that if feasible to make it look better as far as acquiring the grant.
Right.
We can use some of the existing funds we have that aren't completely split, so if we need to take a certain portion of that out to apply for this, that's where that money could come from.
Yes, because it would be, it would be proper to do that.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Eric Dorchiness.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Before we get any further, I think I forgot, you asked to have the special city council meeting minutes of August 30th polled. Did you want to?
I would like to comment on it, your honor, if I could. I know the evening that we had that meeting, there was a lot of information that was displayed and presented to us, and I think a lot of, a lot of our thought process was kind of jumbled. And I guess what I'm trying to do here is kind of present to everybody where I went back and actually did some homework, some looking, some reading. I know one of the questions we had was going to be addressed to the city attorney regarding the incumbent, non-incumbent salary range. Okay, I hadn't heard back on that, so I wanted to get some confirmation on that. One of the things was, we prepared to discuss our ideas, was in one of the moments that came out, and we went from a very open discussion to a discussion that was kind of, once Mr. Dorchiness got the floor, a motion was made right away, and we were looking at a 3% potential pay raise, we got that down to 1%, and that kind of got me thinking where we're at with the city. Several issues that do not support increasing salaries of elected officials, extreme budget cuts recently, I mean, year after year, we're looking at budget cuts all over, required financing for our sewer projects, unable to finance the road repairs, every ward's got that problem. Right now, we're unable to fill vacant city positions, which in turn reflects a reduction in services and reduced staffing. It's well-known, we have limited funds for our limb pickup program, again, goes back to filling positions. One of the things that I have kind of been adamant about for the past five years anyways, the inability to finance needed technological upgrades, and the one, one thing I look at is the telephone system in City Hall. We don't seem to have the money, and that was a very reasonable amount when we did receive a quote. By statute, the city must finance unfunded mandates, okay? Example is the pensions. Financing proposed water tower treating facility upgrade, well, that's something we know that's inevitable, it's coming. And then, of course, required payment for the new water tower, and the list goes on and on. I wanted to point out, using the census numbers from the 2010 census, the current median household income for the city of Taylorville, according to the 2010 census, is $37,617. The per capita money income for the city of Taylorville is $21,095, according to the 2010 United States Census. Both of those numbers, the median and the per capita, are substantially lower than the salaries that this city council is ready to approve with a pay raise. My question is, where's the justification for the pay raise when we're sitting with a very comfortable salary at that point? And again, to increase salaries that the city continues to struggle with, funding for services that the residents of the community currently have, in my opinion, is irresponsible management of tax dollars. As a city council elected by the parish, we need to focus on what the, what the city's needs are, and we need to keep in mind that there is no bailout or rescue money available for our municipalities. We keep spending money, we keep spending. So with that, your honor, I make a motion to rescind the motion to direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinance setting the salary for the elected officials for the 2013-2017 term as detailed in the minutes of the Thursday, August 30th, 2012, Special City, Taylorville City Council meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, we were going to do the minutes of that meeting, and as I've said before, the minutes are what's recorded of the meeting. That's history, that's already written down, unless there's a spelling error or something admitted, the only question we have tonight was to approve those minutes as written. So, you know. But once they're approved, can we go back after the approval and ask to rescind?
Yes, but that's not, I thought, it was my understanding that I was going to be allowed some additional time to thoroughly find out whether or not the one, two-tiered situation, depending on whether an incumbent was reelected or whether someone else was, that was my understanding, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. So I didn't know that any action was going to be taken tonight, one way or the other, other than just approving those.
Well, and again, there is nothing on tonight's agenda that would allow us to approve that. We're just looking at the minutes themselves. We've got no motions coming from that meeting. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Attorney, but doesn't the motion to rescind have to come immediately, the meeting after the meeting that the motion was made?
Well, I just happened to have my cheat sheet here, Alderman Voda.
Well, good.
And I will answer that in stanter. I give a speech on this every year to the, but I always keep this handy.
Okay, the motion to rescind is used when the council wants to annul prior action, and it's too late to make a motion to reconsider. Reconsider has to be made at the meeting, okay? Motion to rescind can be afterwards. There has to be a motion and a second. There's two-thirds vote needed if the notice of the proposed motion was not noticed at the previous meeting and not on the agenda. And that's what we have right here, right now, is it was not on the agenda. And it was not noticed at the last meeting. So we take a two-thirds vote, and I don't exactly what we're rescinding. What we're rescinding? We're rescinding all of the, to have the city attorney draft an ordinance fixing the salaries. And I'm asking. As proposed that evening, yes. Okay, I'm not asking, I don't know. That is my request for rescension. So that can, that can be done. It would take a motion, second, and two-thirds vote to rescind directing me to draft the ordinance. Well, but now, if you, okay, and it was that, with your pending, your written opinion on the legal status of that suggestion. Okay, and I, and Mr. Mayor, I didn't see that in here, is that, am I missing something? That is written in the motion. Oh, it's in the motion. The motion's, uh.
On the back page.
What does it say that I'm supposed to do? Where does it say that I'm supposed to research?
No, this was a special council.
Motion by Alderman Dorchiness, second by Alderman Coontz to direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinances, setting the salary for the following elected officials for the 2013-2017 term, based upon written approval of the city attorney.
Well, your honor, for discussion, I'll second that, let's see where it's going. If that's, if that's the city attorney's opinion.
Yeah, you have to have a motion second.
All right, I'll second that.
So we have the initial motion by Alderman, voted to rescind the motion made at the special city council meeting held August 30th. Alderman Walters seconds that. Any discussion or comments?
I guess I, you said rescind the motion? You mean rescind the vote?
No, rescind the motion.
It's already been voted on.
But it can be, a motion to rescind is just that, is to rescind action by this council at a previous meeting.
Rescind the vote.
And we can do that even when it's not on the. Well, it's not rescinding the vote, it's basically, you're rescinding the action that was taken. I suppose, Alderman Dorchiness, you could, you could view it that way, but it would basically leave everything, I mean, your point's well-taken. It's not rescinding the vote, because you have a vote here tonight whether or not you're going to vote to rescind or not rescind, okay? But it's basically to wipe off the action or void the, not void, because there wasn't anything void about it, but it's basically to, basically rescind that action on the part of the council.
Alderman Burdell.
Isn't it seem a little premature to be rescind? We don't even have the advice of the city attorney yet.
Right.
I think this should be done at the point where he comes back with his recommendation whether it can or can't be done, and we vote on the original motion, up or down.
Right.
Yeah, because we haven't heard it back from him in writing, and that was the motion that was approved at the special city council meeting. So in theory, because that passed at that meeting, it would affect, upon your written opinion. I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Mr. Mayor, but there is a motion, a second on the floor, and now unless that motion is rescinded, then there's got to, there's to have some vote. If I may, this motion has got to be made at this meeting.[1607.01]
Right.
Or Roberts' Rules of Order. The, the, the motion to rescind has got to be done at the following meeting from the time the motion was made.
Right. Well, not necessarily, the fact of the matter is, well, for tonight's purposes, like I said, there's a motion and there's a second. So there either has to be, you know, you either have to rescind the motion, and the second has to be rescinded, or you take a vote on it.
Okay, and if I may, to qualify my reason for this, I truly believe that there was a lot of information that was handed to all of us that evening. We did not have the time to review, and I think we were all under some duress to make a decision because it was a city council meeting as opposed to a meeting, committee meeting. And that's where I'm at. I'm very uncomfortable with the decision I made that night. That's why I'm asking for the rescension, is to come back and let's look at this with all of the information. Mr. Lawrence presented us with much information. Mr. Dorchinez presented much information. We were sitting here back and forth, discussing a percentage raise, forgetting where the city is financially during that discussion, and I think that this is the time that we have to be very cautious on what we're doing. And that is why I'm bringing this to the table, Your Honor.
Again, the question that bothers me about this whole thing is, time and time again, we say we can't do something if it's not on the agenda. This was not on tonight's agenda, other than approval of the minutes of that meeting, minutes only.
That's why it has to be passed by two-thirds vote, rather than majority vote.
Okay, so if something is not on the agenda, you can still act on it, as long as you get two-thirds.
No, 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 just a motion to rescind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Isn't that it?
No, I mean, it's like a motion to table. A motion to table is not on the agenda.
But you can't table something that's not on the agenda.
What's that?
You wouldn't table something that's not on the agenda.
We table something all the time.
Not if it's not on the agenda. I mean, it doesn't come up.
Well, it's got to be on the agenda. This, the whole issue, this motion was on the agenda. By that, I mean, not, the motion to rescind was not on the agenda, but the motion to direct me to, to prepare the ordinance, subject to my approval, is on the agenda.
It's, that's not even on the agenda, it's just the minutes only. The minutes of that meeting are the only things we put on the agenda.
That's a special city council meeting that's already occurred.
Right.
And so we just have the written minutes from that.
We've already acted on that special city council.
There's a motion and a second, unless somebody wants to withdraw it, then, you know, it can, it can pass or fail, as, you know, depending what, what you want to do.
I guess the problem I have is that the motion that was passed was based upon you doing something, okay? So why don't we let that happen, and then, that's where...
Alderman Dorchinez, speaking with the mayor today, that's what I thought was going to happen. And I think that we're going to get to the same place regardless of what happens, because the issue is going to be addressed again regardless of whether Alderman Voda, you force the issue on the motion to rescind or not. But the fact of the matter, I mean, we're going to wind up in the same place, okay? Regardless of what happens, okay? Because that issue's going to have to be brought up again via your motion to rescind or via what is already, as everybody else is saying, what's already in place. Nothing's going to happen until after the Alderman hear from me.
I don't think this is how it'll play out, but again, I think we have to be careful, because again, what would happen in theory is, if we vote to rescind this, you give us information, and we say, oh, that makes sense, then we have to go back to what we did the meeting before, the special, and say, okay, now we do want to do it. I mean, that's what you're saying, right? Basically, we pass it in the special meeting, we rescind it at the same meeting, and then at the same meeting, or whenever we hear from you, oh, well, now we see it, so we can bring it back.
That could be a possible way it played out, but it's going to come back to a meeting one way or the other, okay? It's going to come back before the October, the first of October meeting. They have to be fixed, or they will remain the way they are.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we guess we're going to have to take a vote on it. Alderman Dorchinez.
I still prefer that this, let this play out. I'll make a motion to table.
You have a motion on table.
Well, but you can table it.
What's that?
You've got a motion to rescind on the table, you can't make a motion to table, can you?
Sure you can.
Yeah, I think so. We have, okay, we have a motion to table by Alderman Dorchinez. Do I have a second on the motion to table? Point once, point twice? Okay, that motion to table dies for lack of a second. So now we have the motion about rescinding on there, we have a, the motion and a second on it. Any other comments? If not, we need to take a vote.
I have a question.
Alderman Heberly.
If the motion to rescind fails, we are still going to have the opportunity to discuss this after we get the ruling, one way or the other, from attorney fines. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, that's a good question, because I think, I'll have to read the motion here, but if you come back in the affirmative saying, yes, you can do it, that was the question that night, and that was the only caveat, is can we legally do it?
This thing is going to come back before this council, one way or the other. That's why I said you're all going to wind up in the same alley, regardless of what happens here tonight.
What is the most efficient way to get it back?
What's that?
What is the most efficient way to get it back, if this is where it's going to end up anyway?
Take a vote, vote on the motion to rescind.
Okay. Alderman Heberly.
Just to clarify, that if this fails, then we will have an opportunity to discuss this farther, further, once we get your ruling, one way or the other. It's still going to be an open topic. It won't be closed.
If, if I may...
Alderman Voda.
From the way I understand, is if you come back and say that we can't structure it in the way it is presented, then that motion carries and we're done.
Yeah.
If it does not, if we cannot use the two-tier, then we're back to the drawing board again.
You're back to the drawing board regardless of what happens here this evening. All you're doing is rescinding a motion, authorizing me to do X, Y, and Z. You guys are going to reconsider that issue one way or the other at some other meeting.
Right.
So it will be reconsidered, one way or the other.
This is my, I disagree.
Me too.
We're, in the minutes, we're asking him to prepare an ordinance. The ordinance will always come back to us, and we have to vote on that ordinance, right?
True.
It was my envision, gentlemen, that I was going to come back with a written memo to, to you regarding this issue. I was called upon about probably three, if not more, weeks ago. Clerk Peabody told me that some Aldermen wanted to know whether this is possible. At first glance, I said, well, it would appear, but I said, you know, let's not go too far, let's not spend too much money on this issue until we get, you know, we get something that they want, maybe want to go that way. So now, it's my understanding, we have an issue there, and it was my understanding, and again, the mayor and I spoke last Friday, August 31st, and he informed that I would be, be requested to give an opinion whether or not that, in fact, was an alternative. The mayor has done some homework on his part, I have done some homework as late as this afternoon, on my part and on August 31st, 2012. And it was my understanding that, you know, based upon whether or not you basically adhere to my recommendation, then that, at that point in time, this would be considered at, I assume, the next council meeting, or I would be directed at some point in time via a committee meeting to go ahead and draft the ordinance as you ultimately decided it needed to be done, one way or the other. That was my understanding. This evening, if a motion is, the motion is pending, is a motion to rescind. It has to pass by two-thirds vote. If it doesn't pass by two-thirds vote, then I'm going to, to be directed to take a look at this and get back with you gentlemen and the mayor as to my recommendation or my position with regard to this, what I call a two-tier situation. In my opinion, it doesn't make any difference if the, if the motion fails, I just pointed out. If the motion succeeds, I assume that there will be another committee meeting at which time these same issues will be rehashed, and I will be directed, one way or the other, to do whatever you tell me to do.
I believe, because we, we do have a time, you know, we have to have 180 days before the election, so we might be looking at another special city council meeting in order to get that done.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I just have a question. What's the two-thirds vote?
What's the turd?
What is the vote tonight? There would have to be two-thirds to pass.
Does the mayor vote?
Uh, yeah, the, the mayor would vote, because he is a corporate authority. Anytime there's a supermajority vote required, the mayor would, I mean, you take two-thirds of, what?
Well, there'd be eight now, so there'd be eight present, count myself, so we'd have to have...
Well, yes, it's, it's, it's two-thirds of the vote of the then sitting corporate authorities.
Whether they're present or not.
Regardless of whether present or not. So it'd be se, it'll be seven.
Seven.
Right?
To be over two-thirds? It's got to be over two-thirds tonight.
It'd be over two-thirds.
Okay, so he's seven.
If there's a remainder, it would take, somebody take two-thirds times, well, two-thirds times nine is six.
Six, yeah.
If I may, if I may, Your Honor. And correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, the, one of the, one of the uses of the motion to rescind is because one of the Aldermen, or whoever's on the committee, changes his mind on what it was that they voted on originally, and that's where I'm at. I, I don't agree, after reviewing numbers and seeing where the city's at, that I voted in, in good faith, and that I want to rescind my vote, and the only way I can do that is to make a motion to rescind the motion. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm not saying that...
If I take it...
I'm not asking, I'm not asking everybody else to change their vote, I want it known that I had second thoughts on mine, and that if it does not pass, well, it stands the way it is, but at least I'm on record that I have changed my mind and I voted opposite of what my original vote was. And that was my intention on this motion to rescind.
And that begs the question of Alderman Dorchinez's question, that you're changing the vote. I'm coming full circle, Alderman Dorchinez, because you didn't make the motion. It's Alderman Dorchinez made the motion, second by Alderman Coons, the one that I'm looking at. Okay? Okay. That's where you're coming from, Alderman Dorchinez. It takes me a little bit, I'll, I'll catch up with you.
I still have a question.
Alderman, well, let him finish, it looks like he's got something he's...
No, I, I think that, I think that the motion to rescind needs to be, needs to take a vote on it, move on. That's what I think.
Alderman Bertle.
We're counting with a firm number on two-thirds. What is two-thirds?
Two-thirds of seven is nine.
Nine.
Nine, which is six.
Two-thirds of eight is six.
Two-thirds of nine, have to count all the corporate authorities, including the mayor.
Two-thirds of nine is?
Six.
Six, thank you.
I believe.
It is.
And getting back to Alderman Dorchinez's motion to table, if that would have a second, what would that, what would transpire then? The motion to rescind would go out the...
There'd be a motion.
Would we have to go back and rediscuss the same issue that we made the motion on at the special city council? Or do we go back, and what do we do at the table? What do we table on, and who's it?
Yeah, the table, we'll take it back to whatever the mayor, whatever the chairman of whatever committee wanted to do with it at that point in time. But the mayor is correct, that we do have a timeframe here that's, you know, that if we're going to fix, and that is a very term of art, the salaries, then it needs to be done quickly. It'll be 180 days prior to, well, it's actually prior to the time that they take office, I believe.
The October 1st.
October 1st is the date.
So in order for what we, we did at the special city council, Alderman Voda's motion to rescind would have to fail.
Right.
And/or Alderman Dorchinez's motion to table would have to...
Right, and then, 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 well, either that, and then, like I said, if the, if it rescinded and, and that failed, and so it stands, again, unless somebody brings it up and we have another two-thirds vote to go ahead and pass tonight, it's not on the agenda. The only thing that is on the agenda is approval of the minutes recorded that night.
Correct.
So we would still be looking at another special meeting...
Right.
To discuss this, hear from, take the input from the attorney, and then probably come up with a new motion to vote upon. So, we have, first a second, Alderman Coons.
Just clarification on the two-thirds vote, this being that it's six, did you say it has to be, the actual vote that passes would have to be seven greater than two-thirds, or right at two-thirds?
It's right at two-thirds, because we're talking about nine corporate authorities here.
So six would pass it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Okay, I'm trying to make this a little bit easier. All you want, if I'm understanding what you said a while ago, you said that you're really not concerned that it passes or not, you want to just make sure that you're on the record, that you're against it, as opposed to when you voted for it.
Right.
So why don't you just, why don't we just put that in the record, and then let's go on?
Because it's not in the record, Don.
You can put it on the record, don't worry.
Well, and now, now we're discussing something that's, it's not a difference. Well, we got a first, and we got a, a motion and a second, and I think we need to go ahead and do the roll call.
Ray Coons?
No.
John Lawrence?
No.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
No.
Arnold Dorchinez?
No.
No.
And I vote, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Vote no.
So, so it stands?
The, the original motion stands.
The original motion stands. It's not on the agenda tonight, so we're not going to address it tonight. We will, you know, based upon, I will get you copies of whatever the attorney provides me with. Based upon that, we will have another special city council meeting, I'm sure, to revisit this thing and, and go from there.
I was just asking, city attorney, could you provide that cheat sheet to everybody?
I think I've done that in the past, they'll be more than happy to.
At least me.
Sure.
Because I've been confusing the last two city council meetings today. I'm not 100% sure on whose opinion we're supposed to take, but I would assume that we should take yours.
I would hope so, but that's not mandatory.
Okay, thank you. If you'd give me a copy of that, I'd be very...
Okay.
Your Honor, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, I don't think we'd have to have a special meeting, because part of this motion that was, it says, to direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinances. So if his memo was favorable that we can do this, he prepares the ordinance, we don't have to have a special meeting to discuss that.
Unless it's not.
Yeah, you're right.
All right. One thing I do want to go ahead and get down, I think we're still on, on board, too. We still have to approve the minutes of that meeting, is that correct?
I believe you're correct, Your Honor.
Okay. I retain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from the special city council. Alderman Heberly, second by Alderman Lawrence. Discussion or comments?
Just want to say thank you to all of the Aldermen for putting up with me this evening, but we have to have a little excitement once in a while, and I thought this is a good educational experience.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. City attorney updates.
I'm going to be brief. The Kim Morton easement, we have struck up a dialogue with she and her attorney. Joe Green is going to, I gained permission from the mayor to have Joe Green do some work that they want to know about, as far as where the new boundary line for the easement's going to be in relationship to, what creek is that? Panther Creek, Black Panther Creek, or whatever it is. So hopefully we get that, the plane easement, thank goodness, that came in finally, so we can get that off the, the mayor has asked me to look into whether or not it is possible for us to recoup some expenses, emergency assistance expenses for the plane crash. The mayor was, was luckier than I was in getting in touch with the powers in being. Bob Combs has not returned my call. It's my understanding, speaking to some of his underlings, that, that he probably will not return my call until their investigation has been completed. When that will be, I don't know, but we'll look into that, and we'll look into a couple other things, including perhaps sending a demand letter to the owner of the, this particular plane, which I believe Alderman Walters is here, maybe? The only other thing, I just want to report on, you know, the, the mayor is the local liquor control commissioner, and we, you know, they had this sting, and I just wanted to report that Kriegers, they cooperated with us 110% with regard to that alcohol sting, and the order was entered, and the, the suspension will take place, or not suspension, a voluntary refrain from the sale of alcohol from September 16, 2012, through Sunday at noon, the following Sunday on September 23rd, 2012. The mayor and I always disclose that information to you, Alderman, so you know that everybody's getting treated equally, or fairly, and the same. No, there was nothing different with this than any other one. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I did have the issue of salaries on there, but I think I'm going to commit that to writing and submit that in a memo for...
Okay. Alderman Dorchinez.
Yeah, include, you gave us the copy of the correspondence with Kim, with Morton, Kim Morton, and, and there was, there was a request for expenses? When did we address that?
I don't know, Alderman Dorchinez, man, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I don't know, I think what we need to do first, find out what she wants.
Right.
Her attorney is not going to have to do too much, in my opinion, okay? Other than advise her client whether or not she should take this, this new revised easement. Everybody knows that we were going through this because of the Babs, people would not, you know, cooperate with us, or that's their prerogative. But it's my understanding, again, I'm speaking with Joe Green, that the way that it is, it is now designed, this easement, it really is in favor of Kim regarding her concerns, earlier concerns about the former easement, which basically you have the farmland, and then you have the creek, and then you have the easement, and this would basically bring it over so that the triangle piece, that the, the creek basically forces to be made in this whole situation is smaller. So that would give her more access on the property that she owns. So, I don't know, Alderman Dorchinez, when we're going to have to discuss that, but we will discuss it whenever we know. She also, I don't know if you, I don't know if the council's privy to some of the emails that she sent me, she was sending her emails to somebody, somebody I don't know, but it wasn't me, and she was also talking about, because of course, you know, Kim, at one time worked for the Northern Trust, and she's in the, the market, stock market, very familiar with that, and she was alluding to the fact that based upon the, the corn prices, and this, and that, and that, and this, the grain prices, that she may want some adjustments to that also. So we'll have to see what other, if any, changes or demands she wants.
Alderman Walters.
What the city attorney was talking about, yes, what's on the table right now is actually more favorable to her, and also to follow up, all of the legwork, so to speak, has been being done by us here locally. So their, her attorney, or attorneys, have very little play in this, other than just to look at a piece of paper, and, you know, it's okay, we've done all the work on our end.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to mayor updates, just a reminder, for anyone interested in going to the IML conference, Pam really needs to know, she's going to make reservations tomorrow or the day after, so get with her right away if you're interested. Of course, we had the six-inch rain event this weekend, and, you know, all in all, I think our sanitary system, sanitary sewer system, storm sewer system handled it very well, so, I mean, there's a little bit of water, but not, not nearly what has, we've experienced in the past. And as a result of the cooler temperatures and the recent rainfall, I am going to rescind the voluntary water conservation measures that were implemented the 1st of August, and that will be effective immediately. Any other questions? Hearing none, move on to committee reports. Discussions and or motions to approve, adopt, and deny, and or table, and or amend, and or refer to inappropriate committee in whole or in part the following matters, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Now, we have the street and sewer committee.
Your Honor, there was just one motion that hadn't already been discussed, and that was the ban boosters request to solicit funds. A motion was made by Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Heberlin, to recommend that the